I would like to call this Wednesday, October the 22nd, or 26th, excuse me, Planning Commission to Order. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Amanda Jackson-Denmark. Vice Chairman Charlie Wetmore. Commissioner Kathleen Duncan. Commissioner Rich Delcor. Commissioner Jason Stewart. Commissioner Jim Flynn. Commissioner Lydia DePauw. Notice regarding the adjournment, hopefully this will not apply to us tonight, but the Planning Commission will not hear new items after 9:30 PM unless authorized by majority vote of the commission members present. Items which have not been heard before 9:30 may be continued to the next regular meeting or an additional meeting date as determined by the commission members. Notice regarding public comments, every member of the public who has recognized to speak shall address the chairman and then speaking avoid disrespect to the commission staff and other members of the meeting. State your name and address in speaking for the record. Comments are limited to three minutes. Do we have any this evening? May I have adoption of the agenda, please? Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? I have an adoption, a motion to adoption of the minutes of September 28th. Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Okay, so we have no public comments and we have no old business. So we're going to go straight to new business with Jordan and it is a Indigo Code Non-Hemispherds Street Naming. It requires by defense of Ward Edwards approval of a street naming application. May I intercede a second?
Okay, like you said, the request that by defense of Ward Edwards on behalf of PKP Group LLC for approval of a street naming application. The applicant is requesting approval of the following street names to be used for the future development of the Indigo Code townhomes. You can see the road names and additional names up on your screen. The road names that are all accepted have no conflicts. Additional names are accepted, however, they have some precursors as far as cannot be drawn straightaway in certain circumstances. April 27th, 2022, the Towneville Planning Commission approved the preliminary development plan of Indigo Code townhomes, which is an 83-minute time of development. Town staff is currently making final development plans in the middle. This street naming application provides the potential names for the four roads to be built as part of the development. This street naming application was reviewed at the October 5th, 2022, meeting the DRC with 11 of the 12 street names approved. So your actions as planning commission members grant by the powers and duties set forth in Section 2265 of the UDO. You have the authority to approve the application as submitted, approve the application with conditions, or deny the application as submitted by the applicant. Here's the review criteria and analysis that I can go through if you would like me to. But Town staff finds that 11 of the proposed 12 new street names are acceptable and meet the requirements of Article 3 of the UDO as stated above. And we recommend that Planning Commission approve the following 11 new street names.
Anybody have any questions?
Their total of four names that are going to be used, just if you want to remind us what happened to the names that aren't used, they just go back into the bucket?
They stay dedicated to this project for two years. After those two years that they're not used, they go back into names that could be used.
Want to have a motion?
Jessica's here as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, would you like to speak?
I don't have anything to ask.
Thank you.
I apologize.
I can answer questions if they're right.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the recommendation, staff recommendation for the street names, 11 street names.
All right, do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All right, thank you, thanks for coming.
Thanks, you.
So the next item number two is 41 Calhoun Street. It's a preliminary development plan. A request by Randolph Stewart on behalf of Windsong Investments for an approval of a development plan. The project consists of a renovation remodel in addition to the existing structure to create a walk-up restaurant, a carryout restaurant, retail space with a covered patio, courtyard, and associated parking. It is in the Neighborhood Center Historic District zoning. Jordan?
Okay, I'm not going over this since you just did it perfectly. So we'll move on just to project location. This is at the corner of Lawton and Calhoun Street, just on the west side of DeBois Park. As you can see on the map, there is an existing structure there and I'll get into that a bit more here. The existing building is comprised of a single-family residence and two retail tenants that front towards Calhoun Street. It's important to note that none of the existing structures on the parcel are contributing resources. Project consists of constructing two building additions on the west side of the building, which is between the existing building today and Calhoun Street. The northern addition proposes commercial retail space as well as rooftop deck, while the southern addition proposes a carryout restaurant. Between the two new additions, the applicant proposes a courtyard with colonnades that may or may not provide seating and a gathering space. And the applicant also proposes to move and rebuild an existing accessory structure on the eastern side of the property to serve as another carryout restaurant. The, just a bit of history on this one. The applicant originally submitted preliminary development plans on January 20th of 2021. At that time, staff deemed that the submission was incomplete and lacks sufficient detail for review. The applicant made a resubmission and provided a response to comments on April 7th of 2021. Staff comments on that preliminary development plan were reviewed at the May 5th, 2021 DRC meeting. The applicant provided a response to comments and updated exhibits to respond to the comments provided. After that May 5th, 2021 DRC meeting, the applicant proposed humorous questions and to Town staff and requested to receive a formal written response for each question. Town staff provided a formal written response with UDO interpretations and code sections on June 17th of 2021. The applicant resubmitted plans without a response to comments on January 4th of 2022. And staff comments were reviewed at the February 2nd of DRC meeting. And on July 25th, 2022, the applicant resubmitted plans without a response to comments. Town staff notified the applicant that they would be on the next available Planning Commission meeting agenda. Once they provided a response to comments and a site plan that was stamped and signed by an engineer or landscape architect. The applicant provided that information on September 16th of 2022, which is why we're on the Planning Commission agenda for tonight. Here is a picture of the site plan. The hashed out areas that are the fronts of the building are the proposed additions with the courtyard in the middle. The accessory structure is back here that they're proposing on moving with parking and access to the rear. Here is their landscape plan, showing much of the same features as well that I can go into in more depth where the applicant could as well. As far as review criteria, the Planning Commission has to consider the criteria set forth in Section 310-3A of the UDO. In assessing the application for preliminary development plan, the applicable criteria are to be followed on the next slides. These are also the criteria, the ones that are highlighted are the ones I want to go into in more depth and detail. Numbers two through four have been met and satisfied because they're mostly non-applicable. Criteria number one from Section 3.10.3.8.1 is conformance with the applicable provisions provided in Article 5, Design Standards of the UDL. Staff has found that the proposed development does not conform with all applicable provisions of Article 5, Design Standards. And staff finds that the development does not comply with the following provisions within Article 5. Number one, Section 5.11.4 requires a driveway aisle width with 90-degree parking to be a 22-foot minimum, 24-foot maximum. The applicant has proposed a 20-foot drive aisle. Number two, from Section 511487, requires a landscape island of at least 12 feet in width at the ends of each parking bay. The applicant has proposed around a five-foot landscape islands on the ends of those parking bays. Three, Section 537B2 requires buffers to be no less than half of the side or rear setback as shown, they're two and a half feet, which is not adequate to screen the parking areas from the shiny properties. Four, Section 537D requires 75% canopy coverage, not including rooftops. The plan shows calculations counting canopy over rooftops as well as existing canopy that is proposed to be removed. The next section, Section 5.6.3 requires the site to have 20% open space. The applicant is proposing less than 20% open space. Table 5157C1 requires six spaces per 1,000 square feet of restaurant uses. Due to the submitted narratives which say the courtyard will be used as seating and an event gathering space. The tables and seating areas classify the carryout restaurant as a restaurant which has higher parking requirements, which makes the plan underparked. Table 5157C1 requires two spaces per 1,000 square feet for commercial services. The applicant is proposing rooftop deck and has not taken that square footage for the area into account, leading to the plan being underparked for the commercial retail services area. And lastly, Section 5157E3 requires a pedestrian connection from the parking lot to the building, which the parking serves. The applicant has not provided this connection. The next two sections for the review criteria, Section 310-3A5. The phasing plan, if applicable, is logical and is designed in a manner that allows each phase to fully function independently regarding services, utilities, circulation, facilities, and open space irrespective of the completion of their proposed phases. Staff has found that the project was originally proposed to be two phases, however, no phasing plan has been submitted. If the project is to be two phases and not a single phase, the phasing plan needs to be submitted by the applicant. And the last criteria from Section 310-3A6 is that the application must comply with all applicable requirements in the applications manual. Staff has found that the application has been reviewed by Town staff and has been determined to be material complete. However, the site plan is drawn over survey from 2016 and was not drawn by an engineer or landscape architect, which is part of the development plan application checklist requirements. As far as Planning Commission action, the Planning Commission has the authority to approve the application as submitted by the applicant, approve with conditions, or deny the application as submitted by the applicant. Staff's recommendation would be that should the Planning Commission choose to approve the application with conditions. Town staff finds that the following conditions should be met prior to the final development plan approval to be in accordance with the requirements of Section 310-3A. Number one is to provide a 22-foot minimum drive aisle with 90-degree parking, providing landscape islands of at least 12 feet at the end of parking bays. Providing adequate buffers to screen the parking lot, providing 75% canopy coverage, providing 20% open space on the site. Providing sufficient parking for the restaurant use as well as the commercial service uses. Providing a development plan set with, plan set with all pages stamped and signed by registered engineer or landscape architect that do not overlap the survey from 2016. Providing a pedestrian route from the parking lot to the entry of the building. And providing an ADA accessible space that meets state building code requirements, which is the minimum of a space of at least 132 inches wide with an access aisle of at least 60 inches wide. Or space 96 inches wide with an access aisle at least 96 inches wide. Any questions?
Anything from Jordan, or do we want to talk to the applicant first? Would the applicant wish to speak?
Hi, good evening.
Please say aye.
Tatiana Valentos. I had a response for all the comments.
Have you submitted prior to right now?
Is that something on the record?
She's submitting them to you now? I mean, she can do that, staff hasn't looked at them, I mean, you're more than.
No, I was just curious if they have been disseminated through you or if we're seeing this for the first time. Okay.
Okay, well, you can, you can speak about them, but I'll let staff look at them.
Good evening, my name is Tatiana Valentos. I work with Art Store Designs for a number of years and I'm here to represent Randolph Stewart and Peter Paladino. And I would like to go each point one by one. About the 22 road, with previous staff, this project we submitted since 2019. And with the previous staff, we agreed from the 12-foot driveway to 22 feet, we had to move the building, the system structure that you can see in the site plan. Because this access has been over 50 years. It's been over 50 years, we'd approved a non-easement access with a sound angle you can see in the site plan and it's in the survey too. And the fire marshal, it will approve this. If we, sorry, if the marshal approved this access after removing the road.
Anything else? Is that, do you want to keep going down your list?
About the, about the buffers, I will refer this to Maria Lanz, the landscape.
Hey, I'm Maria Drahti, I'm a landscape designer and I'm working on this plan for 41 Calhoun Street. The item B that requires a landscape island at least 12 feet in width. The entrance is a 12-foot landscape island, he's saying to see the site plan, there's not more than eight spaces that are continuous. I'm just sort of repeating what, I mean, that, that doesn't affect me necessarily, I'm sort of designing within that, that shape. So I'm just commenting on it as an item and I'm going to move on. Oh, thanks. And so then, again, with the item C requiring the buffers to be no less than half of the side or the rear setback. At this point, they're 2.5 feet, which is not adequate to screen the parking area. Okay, so that's your comment, our comment is that they agreed previously verbally on the living fences. So again, I've just done what I was told and we will accommodate, you know, if we have to move forward, I'm not really sure how else to respond except just sort of reiterate what's written here. The 75% canopy coverage, I did, I did look at my landscape plan and I see the discrepancy where I've erroneously kept the square footage of that top portion of the existing canopy. And that's about 645 square feet and I need to, in removing that, my numbers get me down to 4815 of the existing and proposed canopy, which is shot, you know, which is about 700 plus or minus shy of what we need. So I am going to look at Lawton Street, does have a laurel oak that I don't see I've accounted for there. And with that pine tree that I think is proposed to be removed, I'm just going to look on Lawton Street to see if there's any more existing. And otherwise, we'll, we'll add another proposed tree to account for that plus or minus 700 square feet of existing trees that is basically taken over by the proposed live oak. So, and I think that's it for the. So, and I think that's it for the landscape portion. So I'll go back, I'll take you back to Tatiana.
About the 20% open space, right now we have 29 in our metrics in the site plan. But if we, we can verify and meet the 20% requirements. About the six spaces for the restaurant, this is a carryout restaurant, only that require two parking spaces, and we are providing the two parking spaces. And it will not be indoor seating in the courtyard. About the rooftop, in previous meeting with previous staff, we mentioned it's going to be a rooftop garden, it's going to be with a chain and no access to public, it's just private for the owner. But if the commission, you guys don't agree with this, we can follow your advice in this. Oh, it's a stair. You can see in the. In the side wall. You have elevations.
I believe it's a spiral stairway.
Yeah, I was just wondering where on the.
But it's private, it has a chain and it's going to be a denied entry sign. Yeah, we will be just. A private. A court, yeah.
But this stall still has to go through.
Rooftop garden.
Okay.
The other requirement is about the connection between the parking lot to the courtyard. We will be more happy to extend the side wall to comply with the requirements. About the site plan, we, we're going to update the survey. And the site plan is will be signed for an architect or an engineer. For the service of the point, section 3.10.3.8.4, we will submit, see a document from the civil engineer, and we will comply with all the requirements. That's it? Go ahead. Questions, thoughts?
Just a quick question. You said somebody verbally agreed to point B.
Yeah, one and three.
Yeah, who agreed to those?
Oh, it's the previous staff.
I think it was Will.
Howard?
Yes. I think he was sort of the one, and I think that was also the landscape island and the fence. I just remember conversations, it affected some of my stuff, and I think Will was still, Will Howard?
This project's been since 1919.
But there's no written agreement, it's just verbal agreement? Okay.
But you've submitted it several times since 1919, so how come it hasn't been agreed upon?
Sorry. Every time that we submit is a new narrative. You can see its narrative change is where we kind of answer the, all the questions. It's a new narrative.
But it, there's been a problem for the last two or three years through staff regarding that drive. How come you keep reverting back to 2019 of a verbal agreement that we don't have any knowledge of? Like, how come it hasn't been changed since, like, if you knew that, like, in 2020, the staff was saying, no, it's supposed to be a 22-foot aisle, how come you guys keep insisting without trying to work it out in writing?
Because I think the staff have been changing a lot.
We just can't go off on verbal, we have to have some.
I will discuss this with Rondo.
Time to discuss amongst ourselves.
We're going to have conversation between us. Because I know you.
No, I, I mean.
You said you were an ice cream high, so it's good.
I have, and I mean, this is a discussion for the commission, but I have a number of challenges with this, not the least of which is, this has been kind of hanging out here. Jordan, when was the initial application again?
There's three pre-application meetings prior to the actual submission of the application, but the formal one was January of 2021.
And so it's.
So essentially since 2019, staff has been involved with this project.
You know, and because of the amount of time that's been involved in this, I personally feel we need to make a decision tonight. I personally am also concerned with the mass and scale of this. There are some things that are questionable, the restaurants that are considered walk-up restaurants, but there's part of the narrative that talks about tables and chairs being set out, but the tables and chairs won't be for people eating, but they'll just be for the general public, that doesn't make sense. I'm concerned about a deck that's there, and just, I just have a lot of concerns about this, and I'll defer to anybody else that has any, any thoughts or comments between us.
Well, I agree with you that, I, my concern is a very simple one. I think we owe staff and the applicant a decision. You know, and it's been going on too long for both. I think we, we owe you guys a decision, because I know it's been taking a lot of your time as well as staff's time. So that, I agree with your points, I, I just, you know, we need to make a decision.
And I'm, I have the same thought, you know, the whole, the parking just does not seem sufficient at all for that large of a space and that many uses. It just, it's underparked, especially with the seating and restaurant classification. So I think that needs to be taken care of. I think we just need to respect the UDO and, and follow what the UDO is guiding us on. I mean, everybody else has to do it, so we can't make exceptions, and there's a lot of exceptions on this one, and we just can't set that precedent, so.
And. If I may, just to echo what concern that you had mentioned about parking, and just for the record, my name is Brooks LaBruce with Finger Mountain Brooks LaBruce on Hillhead and Service of Scouts with the Planning Commission. And looking at the application, there was a written determination by the UDO administrator about the type of use that would apply and what parking requirements would apply. There is a process for appealing that that would have expired back in 2021. So if it wasn't appealed within a certain timeframe, y'all are bound by that determination. So to the extent that there is an argument about the type of use that this is being proposed here, that is largely outside of y'all's discretion, and you're bound by the UDO administrator's determination.
Which was.
Which was a carryout restaurant.
That it was a restaurant.
A restaurant. So we have to rule with that definition, not an exception.
I agree with Amanda as well, too, on the parking, but also staff has seemed to try to work the applicant on many occasions throughout this period of time, and it's looking at the list of, you know, exclusions that would have to be done or at least met, or I think over, you know, over and above, I, I agree, I think we need to make a decision on this.
I agree as well, I think we won't be able to meet, I'm not convinced based on what has been presented, that the criteria that we have to maintain are able to be achieved by doing a type of conditional approval. I think the, there's a fundamental issue with the amount of room that's on the lot, the amount of open space we need, the coverage that we need, the amount of parking that we need, and I don't think that that can be reconciled with the existing plan.
To me, there's just too many outstanding comments even for a preliminary plan for me to be comfortable with this.
Someone?
I agree with all the things that have been said. I've got a lot of additional comments, but I don't feel inclined, I don't feel the need to go into that, quite honestly, with the general summary of assessment sharing.
Does anyone want to go ahead and make a motion or have any thoughts or anything additional or?
Madam Chair. Just if I can, if, based off of the tenor of the discussion, it does sound like the commission is inclined to, to deny the application. If that is the case, please make sure that you provide findings of fact and conclusions of law given reason for the denial to the best of your abilities. Thank you.
Does anyone want to make a motion, one way or the other?
I'll take a stab at it. I move that we deny the application as submitted. Primary reason would be the UDO administrator's determination that it is a use of a restaurant that was not appealed within the proper timeframe, and therefore it does not meet the parking requirements. The open space requirements per staff are not met, and, help me out here, guys, is there something else?
Just right there.
Yeah, the 20, no, it's right here. The drive aisle is not 22 feet, the five-foot landscape that needs to be 12 feet, the lack of adequate buffers, the lack of 75% canopy coverage of trees, and sufficient parking for other services, and the lack of a plan stamped and signed by engineer or landscape architect, the lack of a pedestrian route from the parking lot, and ADA accessible space with pathways.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes. The comment to the effect of, that comment eight words is provide development sent, it should be utilized in 2016, but it is, and they did include a surveyor's stamp, or not surveyor, the civil engineer's stamp on the site plan, so I wanted to be made clear that the site plan needs to be on the title blog of the civil engineer and stamped, which was not provided.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm sorry. Okay. Do we have any other? Nope. Any discussions? Okay, then may I have a motion to adjourn? Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.